Book of knowledge, so when you hear say BAC, it's the Book of Knowledge from NINA. And it has an outline and some resources, especially I was using it to prepare for today, and there's a lot that's not in there, so remember that. I'm going to keep on saying that because not everything in there is what you need to know. There's a lot more research to do. Also, Darryl was able to upload draft of the presentation. It's missing some things, and I kind of did some cosmetic changes before we printed it, and you guys have the updated one in here. It's to take notes, and it's also, you can also follow along because it's being displayed on the web by Darryl. So today, we're covering sections C and D, 911 operations, telecommunications operations. So in your outline, it's on page 10, and that's the section we're going to cover, C and D. So how this is going to happen for the other classes, we're looking for subject matter experts. In fact, we're going to talk about it after our session today. We've already reached out to some people, some have committed. And so we don't know who's teaching what exactly yet. Hopefully, we can post that on the webinar, and you'll have an idea which topic is coming up. So I'm the one teaching today, and I chose this topic. So we're just going to go through it and ask questions if you can, and if not, I'm just going to go through the whole thing. So Public Safety Answering Point is the C section. And this is going to be acronym city. So I tried to set it up, and you're going to have to know that every presenter is going to set it up differently. But I'm trying to focus on what the acronym means so that you can learn it. And one of the things I'm also going to prepare for you, but I'm not going to send them to you until right before our next session, is flashcards and a test before our next session so that you have time to study, learn these things, and then you'll receive a test, and you can test yourself to see how well you learned. And before we start next session, you take the test so that we can at least see if that's working for you, if we need to change anything. So Public Safety Answering Point, there it is. PSAP, PSAP, you always hear that. You work in one, most of you? Right click?
Left click, Debbie.
Left click. Types of PSAPs: primary, secondary, single jurisdiction, multiple jurisdiction, consolidated, co-located, and virtual. Any of those ring a bell to any of you? We're going to go through each one of them. But first, let's look at the diagram that's on page 49, I believe. Yeah, page 49 of your BAC. This diagram is far more than just a PSAP. If you guys want to turn, since you have your books, to page 49, or it's in your handout. This has a lot, and some of the pieces in it, you're going to learn as we go through some of the other sections, especially on how the 911 call is routed. That's what some of these pieces are. There's selective routing, there's a central office, 911 trunks. All that's not here in your PSAP. So really, the PSAP itself is the little piece down here, the phone, the 911 call taker position, the CAD, data radio network controllers. So PSAP is like right in here, that little section. But this is, this flow of this diagram will make more sense as we finish and go through the study because we're going to cover how the call is routed. Any questions on that? So a primary answering point is the location where the 911 call is first answered. And I think we talked about this as an example last time. It's usually a law enforcement agency. Do you guys know why? Why is it a law enforcement agency? Because the majority of calls come, are law enforcement related. So if they sent them to fire, what would fire be doing all day if it were a fire PSAP? It would be sending them, transferring them to law all the time. So typically, normally, primary PSAPs are law enforcement. They could do law enforcement, fire, and EMS, but they have law. So in some major cities, there's a law enforcement PSAP and a fire PSAP. Secondary answering point, down here on the bottom, you see that sometimes it's referred to as S PSAP, with a small s, sometimes you see it with a big S. It's just secondary PSAP. And that means, since law was primary, fire and EMS are secondary.
I thought secondary PSAP.
What was that? What's your question?
I thought that a secondary PSAP was a different PSAP.
Second, question is, she thought that a secondary PSAP was a different PSAP, and it is. It's, and we're going to go through the rest of them, but it's physically located somewhere else. So in this center, for example, where we are, where we answer for law, I mean, we have law, we have fire and EMS, we handle it all. But in some major cities, they don't.
And the, as Debbie said, the secondary PSAP is usually a fire or EMS PSAP. But essentially, what the secondary PSAP means is that that's the PSAP where 911 calls get transferred to. So a primary PSAP is one that answers 911 calls directly. If a PSAP only gets its 911 calls if they've been transferred from another PSAP, then they're a secondary PSAP. So for instance, Arvada Police answers all the 911 calls for the city of Arvada, but Arvada Fire has its own separate PSAP. So if it's a fire-related call, then Arvada Police will transfer the call to Arvada Fire. So Arvada Fire, in that case, is the secondary PSAP.
And down in that neck of the woods, also, there's some consolidated fire agency PSAPs. So all the separate law enforcement agencies may get the 911 call, and if it's fire, they're transferring it to West Metro Fire or...
South Metro.
South, it's MedCom?
MedCom.
MedCom, because they dispatch fire for many of those jurisdictions. So they are considered secondary, the primary 911 never comes to them first. Law answers first, they get a transfer. Single jurisdiction PSAP. Am I not moving here? I have to use the clicker. It's a single organization such as a city, like the city of Loveland. City of Loveland is a single jurisdiction, and they dispatch for their fire, law, and EMS. So, and they're, they have boundaries of just that single jurisdiction. Does that make sense? Multiple jurisdictions, it's a county, and the PSAP answers, well, it could be a city or county, but it answers 911 calls for two or more jurisdictions. An example would be us here, Well County Regional Communications. We answer calls for, City Greeley is one of our jurisdictions, City of Deacono is one of our jurisdictions, any of our towns are jurisdictions, and then there's all of our fire jurisdictions. So we are a multiple jurisdiction PSAP. And I meant to change those x's to the number of our municipalities. Can anybody tell me how many we have?
Twenty.
Twenty municipalities?
Well, nineteen in the Nassau.
Nineteen, and the Sheriff's Office makes twenty municipalities. And we provide fire, law, and EMS that cover the multiple jurisdictions. Next, we have, I think I just settled that. Multiple PSAPs are usually within one telephone exchange area. If one PSAP isn't able to take calls, 911 calls can be transferred to another nearby operational PSAP. For example, up until recently, people moved into our new building, Loveland was our backup center. I think they're happy not to be our backup center anymore. Our volume is far too high, so now we back up to Adams County, and Adams County backs up to us. If they have to switch their 911 calls, they come to us. And ideally, you have intergovernmental, I can't even say that word, intergovernmental agreements in place before you do this. What's a consolidated PSAP? Anybody without looking at your notes? It's usually an agreement between two agencies. So a city or county is designated as a PSAP for several cities or counties, and I actually asked, asked Robert to check this geography for me, because Washington, Yuma are two separate counties in Colorado, but it's one PSAP that dispatches for both. So that's an example of a consolidated PSAP. Now, why is this important? You're going to have to be able to differentiate multiple jurisdiction versus consolidated PSAP on your test.
Does anybody know what PSAP covers the largest geographic area in Colorado?
Well County. No.
Nope, you're close.
Where?
San Luis Valley.
Oh.
They have one PSAP, covers six counties.
Wow.
So they are the, they're the most consolidated PSAP in the state.
The state patrol, is it?
Yes, state patrol actually runs it, but they dispatch for all six counties and all the municipalities, and volunteer fire departments within it.
And this example on this slide is what Darryl just explained, right? It's a consolidated PSAP, answers all 911 calls for two or more counties or each city within the two counties. Each of the cities have a police department, fire department, and maybe each county has their EMS system. To be able to operate in these environments, and all of you in this room know this, standard operating procedures need to be in place on how to handle calls. Ideally, that is same across all law enforcement agencies or fire agencies, and we know that doesn't happen. So my mantra to our agencies is if CAD can tell the dispatcher, we can do it. But if they have to remember, no, we can't, because there's 40 agencies, as you saw for us, 40 plus, there's too much to remember. Oh, this is XYZ Fire Department, what am I supposed to do here? The dispatch system has to be able to tell them. So computer-aided dispatch systems, as you all know, they assist in handling the calls and allow PSAP to handle multiple policies and procedures amongst different jurisdictions. That's, that's the tool that allows us to be able to dispatch for so many different entities and dispatch different units to each one. So the management structure of a consolidated PSAP varies largely across the nation. Historically, law enforcement has been under a police department or sheriff's office. Fire agency might be under a fire department. And as we are here in Well County now, we are civilian, we are not under law or a fire. We, our director answers to the Board of County Commissioners, and he is a civilian. So it just depends. Sometimes when you have, when you're under law enforcement, and well, just recently coming from Greeley Police Oversight, your influence is heavily on the law side. And when, vice versa, if you were, if you're under a fire department, your influence is heavily under the structure of the paramilitary organization in the fire department. Civilian, to me, it feels really different. It's my first time, all civilian, and I've been under fire departments, I've been under fire too. Under fire departments, under sheriff's office, and under police agency. And they're all, they all feel different depending on your management structure, and across the nation, you have every flavor. Are there private PSAPs? Do you guys know of one? Which one? What was that?
OnStar.
OnStar. Adams County? Not really, because it's publicly oversight.
Yeah, they're, they're set up as a 501(c)(3), so they might be considered a private PSAP.
It might, because it does make money. It's not a nonprofit.
I think they are, I think they're set up as a nonprofit, but they're not a government agency.
Yeah. MedCom could be considered like Adams County, but I think it's under, under, just like we are, it's under public domain, I guess, just lack of a different word. And OnStar is a good example, because when the car, when they ring help from their vehicle, it's going to a private PSAP that is, it's owned by, is it GM? Is it GM that owns OnStar? And OnStar, as a PSAP, nationally, they have several major PSAPs, few in the United States, in Canada. They are very active in our community of our, AFCO, NINA, and Navigator communities. In fact, dispatcher of the year was from OnStar at Navigator this year. So OnStar gets the call, they need to go by the geography or information they get from their systems to transfer to the right PSAP, and that's how we get them.
Another example would be Entrado. They have a call center at Entrado. If there's ever a call, a 911 call in the US that cannot be routed for some reason, they don't know what PSAP to send it to, it goes to Entrado, and then they figure out where to send it to. So they, they have a private PSAP for that purpose.
And Entrado also handles the, it's not OnStar, that's proprietary GM, but the same type of system for Mercedes. They answer the calls for them. And for example, the Boston bomber guy that stalled that Mercedes, they were able to activate the tracking system, and they were on the phone with law enforcement in Boston telling them where they, where the vehicle was going. They were on the phone for a couple hours tracking that vehicle. I guess the guy stalled the wrong car.
Why is OnStar not considered a secondary PSAP if they answer the call and routed somewhere else?
Because they're getting it first. And, and the person isn't dialing 911, it's being activated by their system.
About the medical alert companies? I mean, they're receiving the first information, and they're actually doing EMDs.
That might be another example.
You know, and that's something about this definition that's kind of changing right now, because neither OnStar nor those medical alert companies are receiving 911 calls. Nobody dialed 911 to get to them, but it is a first call for help. So as we start moving away from thinking of just 911 calls as being what we do, and more thinking about emergency calls for help is what we do, then those are, those are more and more like a, an actual definition of a PSAP.
They're doing EMD and all that.
Yeah, OnStar, they do EMD and everything else, yeah.
Some of the medical alert companies are as well.
And the comment was that some of the medical alarm companies are doing EMD also. Virtual PSAP. A virtual PSAP is portable and scalable. It can be as little as one laptop, it can be many laptops that you end up building a full-fledged 14 workstation dispatch center. It allows employees to do everything they do here at the comm center itself. No, you can't do it in your jammies at home. It's beneficial for contingency planning, so should you have to abandon the building or, Darryl and I were talking before the session about Laramore County, and as many of you know, during the floods, Estes Park, they were completely disconnected from the world for a long time. They had now developed their systems and networks to where any one of those PSAPs in Laramore County will be able to answer the phones from the other one. If Estes or any of them ever get cut off again, they can move employees into Loveland, into Forecolons or Laramore County, and answer calls that would normally be going, be answered in Estes Park. So they, they got that problem, and they solved it. And it eliminates the need for large amounts of workspace that may go unutilized. And for example, we're setting up our backup center, it's a different geographic location that's going to have 14 workstations, but it's a backup. If we never have to leave, if we never have to get, you know, our systems don't go down here, when will we use it? So that's where virtual comes in, where you don't have to have that dedicated space. But we're going to be using ours, we heard, right?
So our backup is considered a virtual PSAP?
No, it's, and instead of, the question was, is our backup center considered a virtual PSAP? No, it isn't. It eliminates the need to dedicate that space and all that equipment to just be sitting there for occasional use. If you had it all in laptops or ability to set it up, you know, make a phone call to all your dispatchers, and they can get on at home, and they can start answering calls, that's, you know, that's the future. It's coming.
Do we have any examples?
Do we have any examples of? That was my question there, I left a, I left a blank line, because I do know, and when next generation 911 was first talked about, 10, I wouldn't say 10 years ago, there's one state, and somebody, if anybody on the web knows, there's one state that way back then, they did next generation IP-based phones from the ground up in this entire state, because it's a small state. They were able to do that, and I remember the presentation where they could grab a laptop and go answer calls anywhere.
Vermont?
Oh?
Was it Vermont?
Vermont, maybe. We're going to have to look that up.
I believe it was Connecticut, because they have a single fiber ring that, of course, it's a small state, they have more PSAPs than Colorado does, even though they're so small, and they have a single fiber ring that connects them all into a single, and they have a single phone system for all the PSAPs. Another way to think about cloud, or excuse me, virtual PSAPs is if you think of putting all of the equipment in the cloud, if you know what that means, basically putting it all on a computer network that can be accessed from multiple locations. So like Debbie was describing, you can have, you can have the ability to move operations very easily, if you can access the same equipment from, from different locations, but it also allows multiple locations to act as if it were a single PSAP. And I know we have some people on, on the web today from, from Laramore County, but that's, that's one of the things that they've been working on. They have a single phone system now that connects all five of their PSAPs. If they connect all their other equipment, I don't know where they're at on, on getting a common CAD system and RMS system and things like that, but if they connected all their other equipment so that you could access any of the systems from any of the PSAPs, then it would be a true virtual PSAP environment.
So we probably will, we'll look into which state. And, and there's probably several, maybe larger cities that have gone next gen that have this ability. I mean, it's just moving forward. Next, we're going to talk about PSAP 911 equipment, and it becomes acronym world. So these are all the ones we're going to talk about, and I won't repeat them right now, because we're going to go through each one of them, but not exactly in that order. That order, on this slide is exactly how it is in the outline, but as I was putting it together, I was referring to stuff that we hadn't talked about yet, so I kind of switched it up. So we're going to start with CPE. Anybody know what that is?
Other than the next slide?
It's on the next slide. Customer premise equipment, and you hear our vendors refer to our equipment as CPE. That's all you'll hear. They won't tell you it's the workstations, they won't tell you it's the phone system. They, they'll just say your CPE, and you're supposed to know what it is. You've probably heard that before, right? How about ANI? And it looks like I ended up getting lazier and just saying, here it is, and this is what it means. But it's automatic number information. It's a telephone number associated with the access line from which the call originates. It's the number of person that's calling you, and as you know, in the wireless world, which there is a whole section on wireless, it means something different. So PSANI. PS is for pseudo, there isn't another name for that, right? It's just pseudo ANI. But sometimes you'll see it as the little p, and then the outline has it as capital PSANI. I've seen it a lot like this. Lowercase p, ANI, and ANI was? Hey? Hey, we're learning. So it's a telephone number used to support routing a wireless call, but it can also, you know, give you a cell sector or PSAP to which the call should be routed. It's also known as the routing number. But a pseudo ANI, or is it the pseudo alley, gives you the location in a big complex, like, say, this complex here. We have so many buildings, and we have one PBX main number. When you dial 911, does it say it's 1551 North 17th Avenue? So that's what the pseudos are for. There's another database that somebody has to maintain.
Does it usually maintain a PBX operator or the PBX owner?
Entrado has software that the large organizations, like the hospital, like IBM, you know, big complexes like that, school districts, that they actually maintain it and support it. So the example I use for Well County, our PBX phone people should be entering the data to that database. Do they? Not always.
So are you saying that a PBX line is a pseudo?
That defined location, like Cubicle 3 on floor 13 is the pseudo.
Those of you who take calls, you know, when you receive a cell call, you actually have two different phone numbers on there. One of those phone numbers, you can call back, and the other one you can't.
You can't.
The one you can't is the pseudo ANI. The whole purpose of that number is just to create a record that's used for routing the call to the correct call center. So that's the pseudo ANI. It's just a, it's basically a fake shell record that's used for the purposes of routing.
And we're going to talk about pseudo alley. Is that the location one then, that the database has to maintain, be maintained?
Is that, that number same across the board, or is it just auto-generated as a fake record? Is the record created so that it goes across?
So the question is, is that pseudo number is generated, or is it the same across the board?
It's, it's different for every cell tower sector. So every cell tower sector has a fake, basically, it's called a shell record that's created for it. And when you, when it receives the call, it basically puts the additional information, which is the, you know, the real callback number, in the additional information field. But the ANI that shows up on the call taker screen is that, that fake shell pseudo ANI that is associated with that cell sector.
So it's like a form of an address that the tower recognizes, and it goes to a certain place?
Well, it's, it's the, it's the phone number that's assigned to the tower so that when it, when it's received by the selective router database, and you'll get more into this later, it has a record to attach onto to figure out where to send that call.
And when we show you all the routing of a call, some of these numbers and things will make sense. So today, you're getting the acronyms, so that when we do the routing, they'll be able to say, whoever's presenting, we'll say the ANI, the alley, the pseudo alley, and you'll know what it is. So ANI displays was in the outline, and it really just is where you display the telephone number associated with the call. So it's your terminal screen.
I have a question on that, PSANI. If it's a phase one cell phone, then is the location tied to that phone number, and that gives you the tower location?
The question is, if it's a phase one cell phone, is that number associated with the location of the tower?
Yeah. Because you said that that secondary number is the tower phone number, essentially.
Right.
So if it's phase one, is that where we're getting our location?
Well, phase one or phase two, the phone number that's in the ANI field is the pseudo ANI, and you get an address in, in the alley field that is associated to that cell tower. But that's not necessarily where the caller is, and it's probably not where the caller is. You have to, if it's phase two, then you get the X and Y on the second screen. And how it displays is different depending on what kind of phone, phone equipment you have in your PSAP.
Next up is ANI controller, and it's just a component of the CPE, which is customer premise equipment. So it's just a piece of our customer premise equipment, which provides the decoding, it's just a function that controls a 911 service. But it's something to know. It's going to be on your flashcards, because this question, this answer, although it's simple, will be embedded with something that looks like that, and you got to pick the right one. So that, that's the stuff you got to start thinking about. Alley. So if N was number, alley's location. So it displays in the PSAP the caller's address, the caller's address, location of, and the supplementary emergency service information of the location from which the call originates. Is that the English language translation that they're referring to there?
Where it gives you the jurisdictions, kind of the patch rule.
Right.
Yeah.
An English language translation.
So I don't recall in the outline if English language translations comes up, or if it's a question on the test, but it could be. However, across the nation, it's either, here in Colorado, it's ELTs, in California, they were Telltills. So maybe that's why it's not on the test, because different people, different areas call it different things. But it's something to know. So English language translations, and you hear your phone company, people just call them and refer to them as ELTs. So you get the location of the caller, and it tells you which law, which fire, which EMS. Those are your English language translations of a number, and you'll find out about that number later. As in ANE displays, it's just where the alley displays. And here's the PS alley, and I was probably confusing PS alley with PS ANE, so sorry for confusing you. But it is alley record that is associated with the, with the pseudo ANE. And so it's a location, and that's where I was saying, it's the third floor, Cubicle 13. Or maybe I said it backwards. I said Cubicle 3 on the 13th floor. Or in the large complex, if you're all governed by the same PBX number, which ours is what, 346, 4,000, where is extension 2222? They all have different addresses, right? So if somebody calls 911 from one of our desk phones, does it tell you where to go?
I think the county phone system does.
So, and that's because somebody's entering that information in a lower database of where, exactly where to go. Alley controller is again, a piece of your CPE equipment, your customer premise equipment. And system controller, it's just, there's your definition, an entity providing one or more of the following 911 elements, whether it's network, CPE, or database service. So this is a lot of memorization, really, and maybe the reason we are trying to explain it so you can get a feeling for it is so that it's explained versus just memorized, and you kind of know what it is. Anybody know what ACD is?
Auto-automated Call Distributor.
What we don't have anymore. Which they wish they did. A large PSAPs have this, where it's, there's a system in the back that's taking care of how many calls each operator is answering, who gets the next call, and there's different levels of who should be answering a call, because maybe you want your law enforcement radio operator not to answer a call, so they'll never get one. And so that's what an ACD is. Many of you might have it, some of you maybe have never seen one. If you're curious about it, and if you've never seen one, maybe visit a PSAP that does have one in place. Denver? Denver would be one.
I'm curious as to why you missed yours.
Weld County misses their ACD.
Because it only rings at one console. Because it gives everybody an equal amount of calls.
Because it only rings at one console, and it gives every call taker the equal amount of calls.
And the two channels we don't want to have, the 911s, don't have to.
I was a manager of a PSAP in another state in my last job, and I was going to get an ACD for the comm center, and my employees practically threatened to...
Leave.
What's, what's, what's the word?
Revolt.
Revolt, mutiny. That's the word I'm looking for.
We didn't like the thought of it when they told us we were going to it, after we had it, we loved it.
After you had it, you liked it.
Yeah. So initially, they didn't like the thought, but once they had it, they loved it. And the move to the new center, with our new CPE, we decided not to install it so that the phone would be answered and not have a pre-recorded voice telling them, hey, this is Joe. They miss their pre-recorded voice, too. Anyway, here's our next acronym, CTI. And it means Computer Telephony Integration. And it's integrating a telephone function into a computing device. And I don't know if that makes sense to anybody, it's just something to learn. It is on the list.
I prefer to pronounce that as telephony when teaching.
Telephony. Telephony.
And it's basically CTI is why you can answer your, your phone by touching, touching a screen instead of picking up a handset. It just, it's incorporating the telephone function into, into a computer system.
Okay, gateways had a long definition. Now, some of these definitions, there is a glossary in the NINA website that I encourage you to go, to go look at. It had, the danger there is kind of stick to your outline and the stuff that they're telling you to study, because that glossary has a lot of stuff. So don't think you need to learn every single, every single thing on that glossary. I would stick to your outline because that's where the test is coming from, but that's where some of these definitions come from, and I'll just read it to you. The point at which a circuit switch call is encoded and repackaged into IP packets, is that French already?
Yes.
Equipment that provides interconnection between two networks with different communication protocols. Two examples are packet assembler and disassemblers, and protocol converters. So I would encourage you just to, if you want to know more about this, kind of holler at us, and those of you on the net, on the web, just if you want us to describe this more so that it makes sense to you, let us know. Because I, I think sometimes people learn if you know what, what the gateway actually does, and we can get into it more if you want to. Otherwise, here's your definition.
Well, this will be covered more in the next generation 911, section two. This will be covered more in the next generation 911, section two.
Other PSAP equipment on the outline are this list right here. And I couldn't find why dispatch was listed as other PSAP equipment. Do you know, Darryl? So it's the active sending units from required, not requires, required disciplines, law, fire, EMS, to the reporting, partying, and services. I, I don't know why else it's there.
That's not really a system, so I don't know.
Yeah. So...
It's a system, it's just a few units.
Recording is hardware, software systems that record the voice, so it integrates to your telephony, and radio transmissions for subsequent retrieval. So there's all kinds of recording systems.
One reason they might have had dispatch on there separately is, honestly, I don't think there are any in Colorado, but there are some PSAPs in the country that don't dispatch at all. All they do is take 911 calls and then transfer them to another agency for dispatch. So in those cases, you know, the idea of separating 911 from dispatch makes sense because they're, they're two separate functions that are actually handled by different agencies.
It's like OnStar, where they're taking an emergency call and then transferring it to...
And the comment in the room is that OnStar is an example of that. CAD system, we described it briefly. It's a computer-based system which aids PSAPs, telecommunications, and automating selected dispatching and record-keeping activities. Records management system, it's also a computer-based system which contains selected dispatch information, because usually a dispatch record initiates your RMS record. Not always. Some, depends on how the jurisdiction uses it, they might create a record without a dispatch record, because they, they use it for different reasons. I guess an example would be if you have property, but there was no dispatch record that went with it, but you're putting property into records management, and you create a record that doesn't have an associated CAD. So that records management, it keeps a lot more information. Mobile data systems. Here is the definition in the NINA glossary, and in the context of location information to support IP-based emergency services. A user is said to be mobile if they're able to change access points while preserving all existing sessions. So if they're on CAD, and they're moving, and they're not losing their CAD session, they're known as mobile data terminals. They're also known as status heads. Has any of you heard that? MDT, status heads was the original. MDTs followed, and they were just buttons where they would press the status, like enroute, on scene, clear. They could type very little into them, because they were just, it's the older versions. And then it's all evolved into now they're complete laptops, and they call them MDCs now, mobile data computers. ABL, Automatic Vehicle Location. The sergeant and the trunk, right? Have you guys heard that? It's the sergeant and the trunk. Law enforcement has historically been against this because they don't want the sergeant to know they're sitting at Starbucks for two hours. Or you to know they're sitting at Starbucks for two hours, because you might order something. So FIRE has, was our early adopter of ABL before law enforcement, but I think law enforcement across the nation has really embraced it since. And FIRE liked it because you, they adopted the closest unit in ABL, their location helped to determine who was the closest unit to the incident. Here's another acronym, TDD, TTY. And I put them both up there. Telecommunications device for the death, and tele-typewriter. That's what TTY is. It's a device capable of information interchange between compatible units using a dial-up or private line telephone. But our death community today, and those with hard of speech, what are they using?
Video relay.
Video relay?
Texting.
Texting. They're not liking these devices anymore. Because what? They got to pay a line. They have a device when they could use their phone, I was going to grab my phone, but it has the clock there. They could use their phone, and they want to, so text to 911 is something they're looking forward to, so they can abandon these devices. And we have, some of them are already saying, that's all, I don't even, I don't even have one in my house. I need to be able to talk to you via text or tapping or something. So that community is going to push us to adopt it, and we're working on it. Time synchronization. It's also known as a net clock. Have you heard that term? It's some hardware in the back room somewhere that John takes care of that will synchronize CAD recording and radio, and is that important? Some of you that when you look up a call, and you go into your recorder, and it's off by a minute and a half. So that's important to keep them all synchronized. Mapping systems, you see there's something for you, Troy. GIS is normally what we refer to it as geographic information systems, and they're integrated into our telephony, so you have, we have a map with our Viper. Not everybody has maps with their phone systems. Early adoption of, when CADs did not have maps, the phone companies went out right away and said, hey, here's a map, and I can tell you where the caller is. So some of the maps came in through some of the 911 systems before CAD systems put them in. But now you have it with CAD, you have it, you can have it with, we have both here in Weld County, and they just tell you different stories. You know, the map can tell you exactly where the caller is on the, on the phone system, and on the CAD, we can have a whole slew of other information, like jurisdictional data, commonplaces, icons. We can have the same on both. We just keep Troy busy. Radio communications. I didn't really look further into it to see if we'd dig into this any more other than this list for radio. Because radio is something NINA doesn't really, I guess, dive into. That's not their thing, but you should know it because it's part of our PSAP. So trunked radio. All users use the same radio frequencies. Channels are dedicated to department. Talk groups are assigned to separate conversations. Interoperability between various agencies is possible because of their sharing of the talk groups. And not all users need to access the system at the same time. So these features will be listed as what is a trunked radio system. And what they'll do on the test is make them all look like they're all good answers. So understand and learn. And if, I think I wrote the page number in the handout, did I?
No.
I think it's page 21 is where all the radio stuff, there's, there's some larger paragraphs, more than the bullets I put up there, that may be happy. Again, if you have further questions about radio to better understand it, let us know, or reach out to your radio person in your PSAP, and they can help you. And, you know, we can go into it more if you guys want to. VHF, UHF, I do remember that these frequencies are something you need to know. It's going to, it's going to ask you, what is a VHF frequency? What is a UHF frequency?
Are we a trunked radio system?
We are a trunked radio system. And that would be the same with, if you're on DT RS, or in the case of Adams County and Weld County, we're on the FRIC system, they're both trunk radios, 800, and FRIC is 700, 800. I believe DT RS is two, but I... So UHF, ultra-high frequency. So that'll be 4, 5, 7, 8, and 900 megahertz frequencies. So the highlights of UHF is that these ranges tend not to carry as far as the lower frequencies, and they do penetrate structures better. You may not be able to communicate more than 25 miles away without having some little help with the system, and we'll talk about repeaters here soon. But portable, portable radios allow communications inside buildings. The car, well, I guess in some cases you do. VHF, very high frequency. There's two bands. There's a low band and high band in VHF, and you should know those frequencies. You know, 32, 39 to 72 for a low band, and 145 to 159 for high band. And channels in these frequencies tend to travel at greater distances than those that are higher frequencies and work well in inner city, which is why in the mountains, you'll see them using VHF. Because they, they are not, it will, I think it's more the greater distances than anything else. And VHF just will go farther than your 800, 700 megahertz frequencies. And especially if there's ridges and stuff, the ridge will stop that frequency from moving forward. I'm not sure VHF jumps and goes next. I'm not sure, I'm not really, we can, if you really want to know more radio, we can, we can delve into this. Models and portables, they're like remote computers, and they're in continual contact with the base station of your radio system. The antenna site with the strongest signal takes control of that radio. So those of us on a 700, 800 system, when you hear bongs in dispatch, it's because that base station is overloaded. There's too many people hitting it, and they're not able to take control and retransmit the And the system authenticates if the radio belongs on that system or not. So now that, this year, we separated from the digital trunked radio system from the state, the Weld County and Adams County radio IDs are not on DT RS, and the DT RS radio IDs are not on FRIC. So that there are certain talk groups for mutual aid are granted, and so those radios are only authorized to use those talk groups. And if they come across, they're authenticated with yes, you can use this North Mid channel, and yes, I'm going to let you go through.
And these things that are on this slide really only apply to trunked radio systems. The old-fashioned analog radio systems that are still in use in a lot of parts of the country don't have those features where it can check IDs and, you know, determine who has authorization to be on the system and who doesn't. Basically, if you have access to that frequency, you can talk.
And there's a description of what Darryl just said in your book for the, because he's right, there's areas in the nation where they don't have these newer systems. You may have been using it for a long time, but it doesn't mean others have been able to transfer it to it. These are very expensive systems. Repeater systems is just a method of allowing a radio system to provide greater coverage. Remember, one of the previous slides said 25 miles was kind of like the max, but if you put repeater stations on towers or different locations, it continues that transmission so that you can come from farther distances in 25 miles. So these little nuggets, and like I said in your book, there's a very good description, are things that are going to be, the question might be, what is true about a repeater system? And then they might put, you know, five different descriptions, and you got to pick the right one. So understanding... So understanding it's important. So if we're confusing you with some of this, make sure you holler at me and let me know. Satellite is just another way of getting a greater signal reception. And signals are sent to a microwave or landline to a central controller. Their central controller that votes or selects the best audio signal coming from the satellite receiver. But then again, there's older systems that can't use this. So just make sure you take a look at that section that's talking about the older radio And radio over IP, it's just using technology to transmit radio over a network. You'll see this in emergency operation centers, you know, you have a frequency that they might put into the network, that you might be able to hear either on your computer or a dedicated phone. And there might be like law enforcement, having their portable to the ear like that while they're in noisy EOC. They might have a headset to a radio or to their laptop, and they're listening to it over the network. So there's just different ways of hooking up the radio information. I'm going backwards. What happened here? Okay, now we're switching to Section D. Any questions on C, move forward? We should just go to Section D so that we can finish our time here.
Do you know what the difference between a simplex and duplex radio system is? Simplex uses, go ahead.
Oh, it's just more like a walk, talk, be like a slant.
Slant, yeah, well, it can have a repeater, actually, but a simplex radio, simplex radio channel will have one frequency that it's using, which means that only one of you can talk at a time, because you'll be talking on the same frequency. Duplex will be set up, or full duplex will be set up, where it has, it's actually using two frequencies, one for talking and one for listening. And so when you're listening, you're actually listening to a different frequency, but that allows both of you to talk at the same time.
And that is described very well in the book, the top in versus sending out. And you hear sometimes when we say, well, why didn't they go onto a simplex channel? The one he just described, because we have simplex channels in our system. And sometimes it is within close proximity, because it could have a repeater, but many times they don't. So we have, fire agencies might switch over to a simplex, because they're, they can see you, but they can't holler at you, so they're going to talk to the radio on the simplex channel.
So is that like their city channel? Like Evans has a city channel.
Evans has a city channel, but it might be a duplex frequency, I'm not sure.
Evans.
It is.
Simplex won't tie up the radio system.
Simplex does not tie up the radio system.
Like a helicopter might use a...
Line of sight, you know, ground. Helicopter might use it, too, for landing.
So in your case, what you're probably talking about is you have these other frequencies that can be used, agency I was in before, they called them talk-around channels. They can talk to each other, but it's not tied into your trunct radio system.
Yes.
And they also happen to be simplex channels, so that's what you call them.
So we have like six more minutes, so I'm going to kind of breeze through the next section, which is Section D in your outline. And it's PBX, PSP. This will be, this is more for acronym alphabet soup, so that you can start getting these acronyms in your head, so that when we do our presentation on PBX versus, and wireless, and how the call gets routed and all that, you have some of this, of what it means. And this is the list under D, it's just caller location identification, private switch, ante alley, information transport, and routing. So what does PBX mean? Public branch exchange, it's telephone system. MLTS, it wasn't on the list, but it ended up on my slides, and don't ask me why. I don't think my brain knew that, but it's there. It's good to know. Multi-line telephone system. And when we do our presentation, we might talk about MLTS, so that's why you're getting these acronyms, so that you can know what we're talking about without having to go in and explain them. Private switch, ante alley. This was also a definition from the glossary, and this is how it was set up there, it said PS-911. It's also, you might see it like that. That was directly from the glossary, so we'll have to put that in your cards, do you have a question? Someone?
Where does VoIP phones fall into this?
Where do VoIP phones fall into this? So VoIP, it's not on the list, but it doesn't mean it's not further down in the outline, I haven't checked. Isn't, I think it is.
Well, VoIP can be a couple of different things, but you can have MLTS, multi-light telephone system, that is a VoIP network.
Yeah.
But VoIP can also be directly to someone's home, that's not on a multi-line telephone system. So VoIP is just another way of delivering phone calls. You can deliver them analog over a traditional landline, or you can deliver them as an IP network. And if it's delivered as an IP network, that's what VoIP is, Voice Over Internet Protocol.
But businesses do use VoIP.
Businesses a lot of times use VoIP, but a lot of the, there are still the old-fashioned PBX systems out there, which are analog switchboard systems, and sometimes those are still in use.
Isn't there some laws about this one here, the private switch, ante alley? Where some, where they're looking at businesses or companies having to provide that information?
There, it's a, it's a proposed legislation at the federal level right now to provide incentive. Some states have requirements, Colorado does not. And we'll get more into the regulation and legislation part of it, and there's actually a whole session on that later on in this series.
So this private switch telephone system, which includes network switching, database elements capable of providing an ante and an alley, designed to use in emergency situations to notify public safety. I think an example of this, when we were at Navigator at Disney World, is the hotels might want their 911 call to go to their security before it goes to the local PSAP. And hotels is one of the things that will be talked about in the legislation. Information transport, it's just where the media is transferred. What are the types, oh, this is supposed to be media right here. Types of media include copper, fiber, microwaves, satellite, and coax. And on page 29 to 31, it describes every single one of those, and you should know the differences. I just thought it was a little too boring, and I saw I had too many slides already to describe every single one, but I will include it in the test, and I will include it in the flashcards. Does everybody want flashcards? And those of you on the webinar, just send me an email. I mean, we're going to post it all, so you can download whatever you wish to use. Routing, definition from the glossary. An interface device between two networks that selects the best route to complete the call, even if there are several networks between the originating network and the destination. This routing definition should be something you understand, so make sure you read it. And routing is what we will go into in depth when we show you how a 911 call travels. We've seen some of this, because I teach it at Academy, but we're trying to get someone that knows this, because this is what she does every day, and one of the things that she'll do, she'll probably be drawing it on the whiteboard and show you how the call traverses everything. We can get her, if not, I guess I'll be drawing. So, any questions? Okay, it's 1:59 with 43 seconds. Any questions? Any questions on the web?
We had one correction. Ed Roth, and I just looked it up in the NINA glossary to make sure, PBX stands for private branch exchange rather than public.
Private, not public, okay.
So you think of it, it's usually used in a private company, or a hotel, or something like that. So PBX is private branch exchange.
Good, I will change that. And then for those of you on the web, the first set of documents that was, it was missing one of the printouts and some cosmetic changes, so I'll make those changes that I just noticed in the one you just gave us, and Darryl will repost it, so that you have it, can transfer your lovely notes. So what are we doing next? Like I said, I'm going to send you, not before you study, because then you'll know what you have to study, but probably, let's say Tuesday, the week before our next class. So the next class is June 12th. On the 10th, we'll post a test. And be true to yourself, don't look at your notes and take the test. It's just a test yourself, you're, I mean, you're not accounting anybody but yourself. It's just helping you to see if you took this time to kind of memorize some of this stuff. I'll get the flashcards up there, let's say by Monday, and this coming Monday, so you can use them to study. And I'll get the test up. So when we come back, we won't be going over the test unless you have a dire question. It's just for you to touch base and see how you're learning, because guess what? You're going to delve into a whole new set of acronyms and a whole different list of items to learn, so you got to be learning these as we go.
I have June 11th.
Is that a Thursday?
That's a Wednesday.
Why are we doing Wednesday?
Because June 12th is our...
Wow.
I think because I was leaving for NINA.
Oh, okay.
You, me, and Monica will work it out, and we'll send out an email, let everyone know when we...
And we'll let you know the topic, because that's what we're going to discuss next, is who are you signing up for, when. We did get some people step up to help, and anybody that's listening, if you still want to teach a subject, holler at us. And if there's nothing else, we're going to say goodbye, and we'll see you next time, and go study.